You will all email a copy of our minutes from June 21st. Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Phyllis. We'll have a roll call.
Kim Koller here is the outside. Craig Koschel.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Here.
Wiley Stewart.
Here. Thank you. Now, you will all email a copy of our minutes from our June 21st meeting. Have a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion to approve minutes.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
How is the same? Thank you. First thing is, we, I need a, we had a notice that we were, we posted the notice of a public hearing in the newspaper that I couldn't say it. And it's been posted, I see you make that a matter of record.
So move.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you. Now, the next thing would be to actually close the city council meeting and enter into a public hearing.
Suspend it.
Suspend the council meeting.
Make a motion to suspend the council meeting?
Second. A motion and a second to suspend the council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Okay, now I need a motion to open a public hearing.
So move.
A motion and a second to open a public hearing. And we are now in session at this public hearing. The hearing this evening is for Prime Inc. in reference to the tax abatement decision we made at our June 21st meeting. Due to not fulfilling the job, employee criteria, and recording their CF1 in a timely fashion was the reason I believe that we did not approve that. And here this evening are five from their corporate offices, along with their branch manager. Thank you. And so whoever's going to be the spokesperson, if you would, this microphone would record everything if you'd just come forward and have a seat. Welcome.
Thank you very much. We certainly at Prime appreciate the opportunity to be here and appear before you. I'd also like to say it's nice to see the Pledge of Allegiance. You know, they're actually doing away with that in some places where you can believe it. So I'm glad that's the first matter of business before anything else takes hand. So kudos to you for that as well. We, myself and five individuals are here to present an explanation on some of these tax abatement filings. And we certainly understand the imagery of an empty chair. And quite frankly, the imagery of an empty chair is disrespectful because it was not communicated to you why there was an empty chair. And I can't think of an explanation other than that is disrespectful. So I think the appropriate thing to do there is apologize for that empty chair. And all of us at Prime do apologize for that empty chair and for not showing up. Now, I hope you'll allow me to explain the reasons behind that empty chair, and that is as follows. Initially, when we envisioned the project here in Decatur in 2010, we had a different individual, John Hancock, that spearheaded that entire process. And unfortunately, John Hancock has since passed away. Now, upon John Hancock's passing, and it was an untimely passing, those duties were delegated to some folks in Prime Inc.'s accounting department. And that really precipitated a chain of miscommunication that didn't allow us to diligently track some of our communication. And when we've gone back and reviewed the process, petitioning for abatements annually and on the 10-year schedule that we had is really a legal creature, is what it is. In other words, I'm corporate counsel at Prime. I should be speaking with Tim Baker, and I should be speaking with Phyllis Whitright, and I should be speaking with Ken Meyer on a regular basis. And unfortunately, some, I hope there aren't any accountant accountant types on the panel here, but sometimes accountants aren't quite, they're great with spreadsheets, they're not exactly as great with some of the back and forth emails. And you're probably thinking, well, are lawyers really that much better? Well, the one thing that I think Tim would attest to is at least we can follow deadlines. And what we would have done, had it been housed in the legal department where it should have been, is you would have had very timely, very respectful back and forth. And so what I propose to you on a going-forward basis is just that, there won't be any more empty chairs. I can tell you that. I'll Greyhound it up here if I have to, but there won't be an empty chair. The second thing is, and this really is the Prime culture, we follow up within minutes. We really do. And I don't know how familiar you are with our business model. Jim can speak to that. He's done it for 20 years. But when we're contacted, the expectation is we get back to you within a couple minutes, literally, a couple minutes. And it's sort of how the business took off in 1970, and it's the reason we're thriving in 2016. So anything over a couple hours from us is unacceptable. To have days go by and have lags and gaps in the email chains, unacceptable. But it's not our method of operating, by any means. I mean, this was housed in the wrong department. It was a communication anomaly, and it is in no way indicative of how we communicate with anyone. Customers, cities, constituencies. It's a very fluid, respectful dialogue, and you'll see that on a going-forward basis. I can give you my every assurance to that fact. Let me also say that I do think it's important, we want to explain some of the CF filing, the chronology, on a going-forward basis of our timeliness of filing. But I do think it's become apparent to us that, not that many folks in the Decatur community have really been introduced to Prime. And I would like for each of the Prime associates that came out here to speak a little bit about Prime's business model, and hopefully educate the panel a bit, before I get into some of the mechanics of that CF1 filing. So I'm going to start with Brett Von Willard, who runs our tanker division, and he's going to make some comments about the onsite business model here at Decatur. I thank you for listening to my opening there.
As Justin said, I'm Brett Von Willard. I oversee our tanker division, one of the three primary modes of transportation at Prime. I've been with Prime for 20 years. And I was here in Decatur, ground level, to start the business, went to dinner, did the whole works. We had a two-day job fair at the hospital here. Well, that's the meeting room we could get. Had a two-day job fair for the previous company that had the business, as well as opened it up to everybody. We were looking for drivers, as well as in-house associates to come to work for us. That was March 21st and 22nd of 2011. We opened this terminal specifically to service Bungee North America. Single Source it is, what we call it. Every wash, every truck would be dedicated to Bungee. And since then, in the last two months, with the economy, with the change of some of the oils that the FDA's brought on, I've gone to the corporate offices and asked them, and they've granted us the opportunity to wash for another customer that will bring on some more business, and hopefully allow Sam to fill a couple more positions and get back to 24/7 type of operation in the tank wash. We have a wonderful relationship with Bungee. I read the article that was in the paper, and I felt, I was upset about the way it portrayed our relationship with Bungee, because Bungee's good for you all, but they're very good for us. They are one of our biggest customers that we have in the tanker division, and we're getting ready to start business on the refrigerated side of the business as well. Going to their corporate offices Thursday to meet with them on that. So that'll be more opportunity. We look at customers as partners, not just customers, and we look for long-term, as we did with Bungee. We have a 10-year contract, and that's just the beginning with Bungee on that. We do business with other facilities with Bungee across the country. The relationship everywhere is good. So, you know, we're here for the long term. You know, we also build partnerships with some of your people here. We, unfortunately, they're, I've heard they're closing, but Marcos on Second Street, we did our Christmas party every year there. Brought in 50 to 75 of the people that, either drivers or in-house and their spouses, and we brought people up from Springfield and did a party for Christmas every year. We've also partnered with the Econo Lodge, and we house our drivers that come up to stay. You know, it might just be one night here or a night there, but it's thousands of dollars every month that I sign off on, you know, to the Econo Lodge. I'm going to keep it brief because Justin talked a lot, but I just wanted to let you know a little bit about what we do with Bungee, our relationship with Bungee, and it's strong, and I'd say going forward. You ready?
Thank you.
Hi. Thanks for having us. My name's Olivia Guthrie, and I'm the Director of Human Resources for Prime. I've been with Prime for a little over 16 years, and primarily work on the non-driving staff side, so I wanted to give you a little update on where we are on the Decatur side from the non-driving side. In 2015, we had 23 employees at the facility that were non-drivers, made up of dispatch, tank wash, diesel technicians, and a couple of admin folks. We are planning-
Excuse me. When did you say that was?
This was during 2015.
Okay.
We are planning to add an additional four to five positions within the next year, and that is just for our diesel tech and trailer shop area. We're planning to transition that to a 24/7 operation, and we'll need to add additional people for that. Also, planning to increase our operation on the tanker side as well, which will add additional positions on top of that. I wanted to talk a little bit about our compensation structure. We have a pay-for-performance program for all of our employees nationwide, and basically the more productive they are, the more they can make. And I was looking at the 2015 numbers for our Decatur staff for the non-driving side, and compared to the average worker in this area, we were 50 to 60 percent, our associates made 50 to 60 percent more on an annual basis. And that was based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and that's something that we're really proud of. You know, we look to hire people that want to work hard, that have a good work ethic, and we've really seen that here, and, you know, we really appreciate everything that we've had here with our associates, and are proud to talk about that differential there. You know, basically, we appreciate all of our associates, all of their hard work and dedication, and couldn't be where we are today without them. So again, we thank you for having us tonight, and that's it for me.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Guthrie, and I oversee our recruiting, driver recruiting department, and also working on our operations department. I've been at Prime just about 18 years. And I want to thank you and echo the comments of Justin and Brett and Olivia, and, you know, apologize for some of the miscommunications and lack of communications, you know, in the past. In addition to our company, our in-house employee numbers that Olivia mentioned, we also have just over 20 drivers that are solely dedicated to the Bungee business in Decatur. These are primarily independent contractors that live and work in this area. The independent contractor path, they're leased to Prime. They operate solely under Prime's authority, you know, with the DOT authority. And those drivers, you know, like I said, are dedicated to this operation only. They're not W-2 employees, they're 1099. Some of them, probably the majority of them are LLCs. And the reason the drivers go that path is because they have greater earnings potential. There's not, you know, really a cap on their earnings, it's not per mile, but drivers who are more efficient and manage their costs better and can run a business better can achieve more personal income. You know, I don't, you know, not to make a long, a long drawn-out explanation here, but, you know, if you're not familiar with this industry, and the transportation and trucking industry, there's a very, you know, pronounced large driver shortage throughout the country. Depending on which economist you listen to, it's somewhere between, you know, 170,000 to 240,000 drivers, you know, short by 2020 to 2024. So we're continually looking for drivers in this area. Seeding those drivers is crucial and critical to our business and our growth, and also our ability to service customers such as Bungee or any others. So we spend a considerable amount of marketing on a monthly basis in Indiana and across the country to find potential drivers. You know, one thing I will mention in our efforts to develop drivers, we also spend a considerable amount of money in what we call our driver development program. We think it's the best in the industry. At little or no cost, a qualified applicant can obtain their CDL and get the necessary training for, you know, tanker, refrigerated business, or flatbed business. And like I said, it's little or no cost to them, and, you know, they can realize the same earnings potential as any other driver out there. So it's, you know, we're continually marketing for that program here to develop more drivers and across the country. This area is a big focus for us, obviously, because of Bungee here and our tanker operation here, as well as some of our other businesses. So approximately 50% of those 20 drivers have come through that driver development program. So, you know, we continue to invest in that and hope to develop more drivers as we go along. So.
Hi. I'm Paul Smith, and I oversee our shops. I've been with Prime for a little over 18 years. You know, I just want to start out by saying we've got a great group of mechanics. You know, they do an incredible job keeping our equipment going. Dedicated, hard-working folks. They do a great job. Prime's got a really unique culture. The pay-for-performance, it's not something that everybody can do. You know, the harder you want to work, the more money you're going to make. It's a great opportunity. Sometimes when you open a facility away from home, it's hard to pass that culture on. But it's been great here. You know, the folks we've had are just top-notch, so, you know, we look forward for that to You know, we want to grow in a way that promotes long-term job growth. You know, we want to bring people in here that are going to retire from Prime. With the pay-for-performance, you want to have enough work for all the mechanics you bring in to have output. You know, one thing we've recently started doing is we've started working a lot of our refrigerated trucks in Decatur. You know, to begin with, it was kind of a truck slash APU slash tank shop, but it's really starting to turn into a refrigerated shop as well, so we're doing, bringing a lot of that stuff in. It's been allowed us to really expand what we hope to do in the future.
So, okay? Yes?
I'd like to give you guys black letter facts on the company that you've seen the face of the company. And I think I'm going to be one short.
We can share.
We can share.
We can share.
That's fine. Hopefully, you guys are out driving around on interstates and you see the black block letter Prime stuff. You know, we've got a wonderful facility here in Decatur, but we actually, if you can believe it, cover about 800 million miles a year, if you can believe that statistic. Now, of course, we hit all 48 states, but Indiana is, has always been, and will always be a top-five state. And if you look at some of this data here, I just think it's mind-boggling that we'll hit 40 million miles in Indiana. You see that we purchased 13 million in fuel in Indiana just last year. 40 million in fuel purchased in the state of Indiana, and you can see the load counts there. So I think that you've heard we want folks to retire at Prime Decatur, but Prime really is a fixture in this community and this state. We have so many customers in the state, it's such a thorough affair for us, that the thought of Prime not being here in five or 10 years is really a nonexistent prospect. We're extremely fortunate to have grown at double-digit clips for the last 10 years, and our growth isn't going to slow down. But really, the linchpin of that growth is Indiana. We have consistently been a top-five state. So hopefully, the plate has been set a little bit on what our business model is and who we are. But I would like now to get into the matter at hand on why we've been asked to appear here, and that is the CF1 filings and some of the delays in the filings. What I can tell you on a going-forward basis, starting with the next filing, which is this filing that you've still asked for information, we really do need to attach an addendum to that filing that documents with the exact particularity where the numbers are and why they are what they are. I think it would be an injustice not to do that. We can easily have that done this week. It'll be a thorough, full-fledged explanation on every number associated with our CF1 filing, should we, no doubt, as to the question on why the numbers are what they are. And we hope that to be satisfactory to you. But as I said, from the time we were notified of some of the manners of submitting the CF1s and having them submitted late on two consecutive years, I can say in addition to providing you this CF1 addendum, which will be detailed by the end of this week, on a going-forward basis, of course, there will be no late filings. And we'll understand and respect any decision you would make in the future on a late CF1 filing, but I quite candidly don't think we have anything to worry about. So we would respectfully ask, as you deliberate on this CF1 filing, to take into account some of the factors I presented to you today, but just know that on a going-forward basis, the proof will be in the pudding, both in the addendum that I provide you by the end of the week, but next year you can expect a filing early. And if it's not, you hold our feet to the fire. I'll still show up, but you guys can ring me. Do you have any questions for myself or any of the other individuals?
I guess I go back to the, if my numbers are correct here, the filing said you were anticipating 38 employees, and you have 14. You're saying you don't have 14, you have more?
We do. We have more than 14. We'll provide a very detailed addendum that states that the FTE is higher than 14, and we'll also provide in that addendum the actual computed payroll numbers and what that is equivalent to on an FTE basis.
Okay.
And you'll have that by Friday.
Because you can understand when we hear, I forget what the term was, but like significant.
Right.
You know, it was supposed to be 38, and it's 14. That's not close. If it's close, it may have been different.
No matter the mathematician, they're all going to call that a substantial deviation.
Right.
I think Tim will tell you, there's not a lawyer in the world good enough to say that 14 and 38 are the same number. Not that I know of.
It's not substantial.
Yeah. So, but the deal is, we signed something that said we were going to be in substantial compliance, and we have data that demonstrates that we have created more than the 14 jobs, and we are at a level as far as injection into both capital and what our payroll is that does put us into substantial compliance. And like I said, you'll have a chance to review that Friday, and you'll have a chance to fully question us on that document at that time.
I do appreciate coming and presenting tonight and sharing, and, you know, sharing from your perspective, the failures on your side. It's still hard, though, to accept some of that, particularly because it wasn't just this last time it was late, it was late before. So why didn't action get taken then?
If, in all candor, if you can believe it, this newspaper article that was published on June 6th was the first time our legal team had become aware of late filings.
But then that's your problem internally.
It is.
It's not the city of Decatur.
It absolutely is. And the first two sentences I said were, "We mismanaged this issue." And the one thing I do know is, between now and Friday, we'll get numbers computed, but the only explanation I can give you on the mismanagement was that it was mismanagement. And I don't know that we can explain away the mismanagement. We can only explain that we've now identified it as mismanagement, and what we can control is on a going-forward basis, it will not be mismanaged. So I would really ask the judgment to be leveled against us on a going-forward basis. I've discovered the issue. Our general counsel has discovered the issue. Our chief executive officer has expressed his displeasure after having the newspaper article placed on his desk. So this is a front and center foremost of importance issue, and on a going-forward basis, it's going to be handled accordingly. It was not in the past. And the explanation I have for the mismanagement in the past was, it was mismanagement based on a delegation of responsibilities due to an integral associate's untimely passing. But that's not an excuse, it's just an explanatory factor on why for the last two years. On a going-forward basis, we won't have to answer those questions anymore.
On your CF1, you listed 14?
We did.
And Olivia says you currently have 23, with plans of increasing that by four to five to maybe even more this year.
We fully expect that the FTE will grow five employees by the end of the calendar year. And as Olivia explained, if you look at, based on the payroll we do allow, which is a median payroll of $53,000, that's a pretty handsome per-person expenditure. And so if you look at the 22 FTE that we have slotted in with a growth of five to six, say, which would put us at 28, it's 28 and we're 75% above the median expenditure for an employee. So as far as just looking at our overall raw payout for payroll expenditure, we absolutely are in the high 30s on an FTE basis. And I think we can provide an addendum that elucidates that, both in terms of the numbers and the explanation of those numbers. But it's not just payroll, it's also capital commitment. If you'll remember from the CF1 filing, what we proposed to commit capital aid at 4.2 and what we did at 4.7 is also a substantial deviation, but it's northward of what we had promised. And I think that's also a proxy of what we're doing in the area. In other words, we overcommit it now as a gesture of expecting that growth. We would never overcommit 400 grand if we expect to only fill a house half-full, right? So the expectation is we've dumped an extra 400, 450,000 in on what we promised because we're going to staff the place up. But as you'll see in the addendum, the FTE that was contracted for at 39, and what we're going to produce in the hard numbers, is far more comparable than a 39 to a 14 FTE, by all means.
I guess my question is, you're late on the filing, and then we come to the public hearing, and you're telling me you're going to get me that addendum on Friday. Why isn't that done now?
Yeah.
Because you're apologizing for this, but then you don't even have the facts. All we're going off is numbers that you're pulling out of the sky.
Right. The, here's what we anticipated happening at the meeting, and it's in fact the case. We're going to certify the number that we produce in the CF1. We need to explain exactly what your questions were from June. And that, I mean, that's a difficult enterprise. There were a lot of questions on, what does 14 truly constitute? And not to play funny with the numbers, but 14 really doesn't equal 14. I mean, if you have 14 FTE at one place and you're paying them 21 grand, you have 14 FTE at another place you're paying them 60 grand, you have 14 FTE at another place you're paying them 19 grand, you've got three different levels of payroll there as far as your FTE count. And we need to, we want to provide you as much detail as possible on what those payroll figures are, broken out in brackets, and why it balloons the FTE considerably higher than 14. But I mean, that's an enterprise and sitting down and drafting, I mean, it takes some time.
We'll see that then in your amendment, because, again, I'm going back to my June 7th. It wasn't just the employees, it was 1.5 million payroll in your 832 payroll.
Correct.
And what we were given.
Yes.
So if we get different numbers, then we-
But I think Tyler raises a good question.
Right.
Why couldn't that addendum be brought tonight?
Right. And the point is, it is, from the time that it registered on our radar screen, which was the middle of June, until now, you're talking two or three weeks with a July 4th vacation. I mean, it's an involved document on explaining the what's what and the why. So it's a bit more involved than getting a question on, do you have your CF1 in time? When are you going to file it? If we need to produce one-word responses to in the future, we'll absolutely do that. On a going-forward basis, the CF- On a going-forward basis, the CF-1, we think, will be self-explanatory when you understand the rationale behind our numbers. So I guess what I'm asking for on this Tuesday is, let us finalize the document by Friday, which is three more business days. On a going-forward basis, there will be an understanding of the numbers such that we're not going to need to add addendums to addendums to addendums on a going-forward basis. We genuinely believe that, after producing that first addendum, you'll have enough information at your disposal to be able to digest what the business model looks like, to be able to digest how far ahead of the curve we are on paying as far as per capita in the area, and understand the FTE to be considerably higher than what was initially reported. But this filing, it's no surprise, it does have an asterisk to it. The caveat is, we underreported a number, and we need a few more days to be able to explain why that number was underreported. But it's not going to be a one- or a two-sentence explanation. You're going to have a very thorough explanation on what all the numbers mean, why the numbers mean what they are, and what the projection is for the CF-1 filing of next year.
Tim, I have a question.
Definitely.
If counsel was to deny it, can they come back again next year and make the request?
Yes.
Yeah. The denial is only for one year.
For one year, okay.
It doesn't necessarily terminate the abatement for the entire period.
Okay, just for the one year.
Yes. But what I would suggest is, if there's some additional explanation that's going to be provided, that counsel not take any action on the resolution this evening till you've had a chance to see this addendum, review it, and then maybe at your next meeting, take up the resolution, make a determination whether substantial compliance occurred or not. And at that point, if we have the resolution prepared, it can go either way, so whatever your decision is. But regardless, the resolution would then be communicated to Prime, to the county auditor and the county assessor, which is a requirement under the statute.
You answered my question, because my question was, well, if we don't have the information tonight, how could counsel vote on it?
Yeah. I think it's unfair to counsel to make the determination without seeing this.
But I understand the problem.
I understand what you're saying, and what Tyler's saying is, you know, your wish is that that would have been presented this evening.
Correct.
And we are minus one council member tonight who has some family issues.
Okay. Are there further questions for any of the representatives?
We do want you in Decatur.
We do. Again, thank you for coming and providing this explanation, and you are important to our community and to Decatur.
And Bungie is very important to the community, so we want to work with people that work with Bungie.
And of course, we broke ground in 2010, so this experiment is not a six-month experiment, it's a six-year experiment, and we're very happy with how it's going on this end. The relationship we've had with Decatur is obviously, I think, at this point, can be classified as long-term, having been six years in the making, so-
Well, we also understand that Decatur, City of Decatur, does use your facility as well, so that was pointed out to us.
Good. Any other questions?
No other, if no other comments, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion and a second. Close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
So now, I need a motion to reconvene the city council meeting.
Second.
You got a motion and two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you. So, now, back to our discussion on this, I guess, per Tim's recommendation-
I would table, yeah, what's the resolution, Phyllis? The next resolution number.
Eight? Yeah, so if you make a motion to table-
I'll make a motion to table this resolution 2016-8, until such time we can receive the additional information.
Second. A motion and a second, to table resolution 2016-8 until our next meeting or until we have all the information. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. If you can get that to us, and then I can distribute to them, they can have ample time to review it before the next meeting, and that would be appreciated. Again, on behalf of the city, thank you very much for taking the time to come all the way from Springfield, Missouri, tonight, five of you, so we do appreciate that. That speaks volumes from your company, so, all right? Thank you. Event forms. Three department heads, I think, may have a signature on an event that EDZ or Ed's Harley-Davidson Service and Repair is planning. Do you each have a copy, or where are we at on this?
You want it?
Sure.
I have a copy, but I didn't bring it. I thought we were going to sign the original.
You can, you can sign his. It's all good.
Thanks.
Probably be easier anyhow. Jeremy can sign off on that one, then we all have just one copy. And back to the Prime people here, yeah, we were all saddened also about Markler's. Someone will buy it. Don't feel obligated to stay for the rest of the meeting, just, we're going to cover other things if you guys got to go. You can leave.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming. Okay, so I have an event form here from, is it, is it Ed's? Is that how they say it? EDZ HD Motorcycle Service and Repair. They have done this several times in the past. They want to have an event on July 21st. They're located down here in the corner of First and Jackson. The setup time would be between 4:00 and 4:30. The event would start at 5:30, run until 8:00 PM. They're looking for approximately 100 people in attendance, and all three of our department heads have signed off on this. Like I said, they've done this several times in the past, so if there's a motion to approve this event form-
So moved.
I have a motion from Matt, and a second from Riley, to approve Ed's Motorcycle Service and Repair. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. I'll give this to you, Phyllis. And then, next up, Dan. We talked at our last council meeting about the necessity of a water rate increase to try to get ourselves back up to where we need to be simultaneously with Dan contracting, who are you going with? It's Midwestern, is that it? Midwestern Engineering to do a rate study for our-
A feasibility study.
A feasibility study.
A bigger project to move forward.
Right.
This is something in the interim to stop the slowly decreasing operating fund in the Water Department, and also allow Jeremy to move forward with some projects in the next year. Right now, I just don't feel comfortable spending on these projects when our operating fund is going down every month. So, you know, I gave you guys a few options. It's obvious that we need somewhat of an increase to keep the fund where we need it, and to be able to move forward with some of these projects. Next year will be, you know, hopefully, some creative accounting and some things done with the bond issue, of refinancing the bond, and, you know, we'll do a bigger project and hopefully still, you know, minimize the increase of next year. But right now, I'm one of needed to just to move forward.
What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is a 15%. Like I said, I showed that is, on a minimum bill, a 15% is $2.15 a month. On a, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. On a minimum, it's $1.29.
No, 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 it's 10%. Right-hand call.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The 15% increase on a minimum bill is $1.95. Scratch that earlier one. Okay. On a, on a minimum bill, on the water, it'd be a $1.95 a month increase. On an average customer, what they call an average, it's $3.20. It's a 15% increase on just the water portion of the utility bill.
That's a good point to make, what you just said.
Right. On a minimum bill, the water is about 20% of the utility bill. Everybody can call it the water bill, whether it's water, sewer, storm, sanitation, but the water's about 20% of that bill on a minimum customer.
I make a motion to-
No, let's discuss here a little bit first. And you said the maximum was around $3.20?
No, no. On an average user-
Average.
Average user?
On an average user, 15% would increase their bill $3.20 a month.
Okay. So, Tim, before we do anything here, is it just as simple as having a motion and seconding it and setting a date retroactive for this to go into effect?
Well, you have to, you have to have a public hearing on a rate increase, and so you schedule a public hearing, accept public comment. Normally, you have a rate study done before you do an increase, but you have the ability to do that internally, and I think Dan has run the numbers and has come up with a figure that he thinks will at least get us where we're not bleeding money, where we're holding our own. That doesn't address the long-term projects, and that's what he's talking about then, in hiring an outside consultant to come in and study different options on a longer-term basis to try to give us some direction in terms of, what do we do, you know, five, 10 years from now? You know, does it make sense to spend money here if we're going to have to do something major here? And, you know, it also takes into consideration where our plants are, where our wells are, you know, do we keep them where they are? Do we move them? You know, do we do other things? Are we looking at some major water lines that have to be replaced? Those are all big-ticket items, and you're not going to do that with just raising rates. Those are probably going to have to be funded through a bond issue, and you will raise rates to cover that, but you can't, if you tried to cover that just on your operating revenue, you'd be raising rates astronomically, and people just can't afford that, so-
But if I understand, currently, we're actually going the whole-
We're losing money.
We're not going, yeah, we're going, we're losing money.
Okay. That, what I said wasn't the best way to say it.
Right. A few years ago, or five, six years ago, the sewer department was really going down fast and ended up borrowing from the water and storm, and I don't want to get to that again where that happened the last time. This will allow us to keep the funds where it's at and actually probably be positive rather than losing money each month.
So you can operate normally the way you should.
Right. And, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be done, and, you know, I keep telling Jeremy, well, hold off, hold off, hold off, you know, you know, there needs to be some money there to be able to do these projects, especially if they're going to be repaving streets. It's insane to repave a street with a 60-year-old water underneath it.
Right.
And like he said, the big capital thing, projects are going to probably start next year, and that's the reason for this feasibility study, that Midwestern's going to give us about, what is it, I think it's six or seven different options, and they're going to put prices with everything and pros and cons with everything, and that's something we'll all look at next year.
What's their anticipated date to have all that complete where we would look at that?
Um, I think you said the feasibility study, he was looking at a few months, maybe? Nineties, something like that? And along with that, they're going to do a modeling of our system to show us how the whole, because it hasn't been done, and it's a very valuable tool for all kinds of reasons. I mean, fire flow, everything. They're going to, they're going to model our whole system in town, and then that'll show us the basic needs we need in different areas, along with how we're going to move forward with whether it's an implant, a well, or whatever.
Will that be done electronically? So you'd have, you said the modeling, is that, would be like a picture on the screen, done electronically or an actual?
I don't know exactly. I would think it can be electronically.
I would think so, too.
A lot of the work's going to be done with our employees as they flow-test the hydrants the next, the next time they flush them, so they're going to flow-test them, and that'll give them numbers to, you know, actual numbers to plug in rather than just guessing the flows. So they're hoping to have a very accurate model when this is all done.
Chris.
And they won't, I think they flush hydrants in September. Is that September, the next one?
Yes, and it's normally the last week in September, first week in October, it's a two-week wash.
Most everyone in town realizes that we've got a storm-water issue down on Master Drive in that area, and, you know, we tabled taking that on this year, but I've pretty much committed us to doing it next year. And Dan and Jeremy and Berlin and they're all looking at ways, the best and most inexpensive way at the same time of doing that, and, again, Master Drive, that's a long street. Do you want to ultimately, you know, run new sewer, repave that street and not replace the water lines? I mean, I think that, you know, that's the time to replace the water lines. Do we have the money to do it right now? No. Well, let alone the emergency situations that'll occur. If we don't have any cash for the guys to get the repairs, we're going to be upside down.
You know, and all the things you're looking at downtown, the improvements you want to make downtown, if you want to make all those improvements over 90-year-old water lines.
Bill?
I'm just curious, Dan, you did a study on kind of where we stand within the Indiana-
Yeah. Well, I did a study, but one of the consultants did a study statewide on averages.
You might point out where we're at.
Yeah. Sewer, with the sewer side, we're pretty much average, right around average, but we've had some increases the last couple of years. Water hasn't had an increase since 2009, and we're well below the average for the whole state and as well as our population size. But like I said, there hasn't been a water increase in seven years, and that's why a lot of the capital projects haven't been done.
Rate increases are never a thought or anybody. We're getting into a situation in a lot of these parts of the city that it's a must, it's not a, it's not something that we want to do on some of these improvements, it's something we have to do, and we have to do sooner than later. You know, I agree with Dan, we need to do something short-term, but also we need to look long-term. You know, Dan and I have had many discussions over the last couple of years about what needs to be done, but right now, we can't currently fund what we need to do. Jeremy? Point out, we'd have done a mile a year back, years ago, you know, give that some- Well, and Bill and I have talked about several different things.
Like, I mean-
You know, you have to set out a plan to try to replace so much every year. You know, so in 20 years, we're not in a situation again, you know, you can do a mile or a block or two blocks or however, it figures out to be every year. You know, those had up over time, and you would get into a situation that, you know, at some point, you'd be getting caught up, or just not in that position right now.
And, you know, we talked about last time, there's streets in town where, you know, it's a high street, it was about a half-mile, then we were there 13 times in one year. It's just, it's not efficient, it's not smart, we're wasting money by putting band-aids on it. So, we, you know, and Jeremy had some plans for, you know, that's the way we need to go forward, is let's really improve it and not just keep putting band-aids on everything.
Did you say how much the feasibility study was going to cost?
Uh, I haven't yet.
It's around $24,000, I think.
The feasibility study is $14,500.
Is that getting passed on to customers or does the city take care of that?
Well, no, it'll come out of, it comes out of user fees.
User fee?
Yeah.
Then you're talking about a bond issue next year, possibly.
Off the way.
You know, any ballpark figure of what it might be as far as-
No, because there's about seven options, anything from renovating a plant to building a new plant, to building a new well field. We have a big issue with this well flow out here.
Would this be on the water part of the bill or will it be the total bill, like two each and-
It'll be just one. We can't share funds between the utilities, they're all separate businesses.
So we could be talking about a 50% increase in for bond, right, for water alone?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, but we have, we have a 20-year bond that's 10 years old now, and we can, there's options, there's some rates that are lower.
What's that?
Yeah. Basically, it was from the last tower out in East End town. That's not 10 years old, it can be refinanced for probably about half a percentage rate. So that's why we hired consultants to come in and look at all the options and hopefully keep the increases, you know, as low as possible, with refinancing that bond, rolling it over into a new bond- rolling it over into a new bond, they just did with sewer, and it was a minimal increase for like a $6 million new bond for the interceptor project.
So are we going to vote for a percentage increase, or, that's what I would suggest, Dan?
He said we have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, I think, I think what you do is you recommend to proceed with a 15% increase or whatever percent you're talking about, and then we'll follow the statutory procedure of getting it put in.
With a public hearing?
Yeah.
I would make that motion, 15% increase.
On the water.
On the water, only.
Have a motion for 15% increase?
I'll second that.
Have a second.
This is then to go set up a public hearing.
Yep, so if we vote on this, you vote yes, then at our next council meeting, two weeks from this evening, we could have a public hearing? Maybe, depends on when you can get the notice, and it has to be, it may not be until the first meeting in August.
Okay. Wylie, yeah?
Yeah.
Wylie seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have on the agenda. Tim, did you have anything for tonight?
Uh, two things, I gave Phyllis Paul Protsch contract to buy the property on Monroe Street, and needs to be approved by council and made a matter of record. The purchase price is 17, 750, I believe, did I write it, Phyllis?
17, 750?
Yeah.
Which was the average of the two appraisals.
And that particular property, Jeremy, we would take down ourself, correct?
Yes.
You need to make that a matter of record?
We need to.
Please do.
All right, make that a matter of record.
Prove it and make it a matter of record.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve this and make it a matter of record.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you.
Second thing I have is, we will be introducing or submitting the petition for the jail annexation at the July 19th meeting. Christie Sturt sent out a timetable or timeline, and I believe, Phyllis, is that when she will have the fiscal plan? So that will be submitted, you'll have a public hearing on that, and then after that, you'll take action on an ordinance, and there has to be a timeline, you'll have to do it in two different meetings to finalize it, and then there's a 30-day period where remonstrance could take place, and after that period, then the annexation is considered final. So it'll all be done before the end of the year, which is what the county needed in order for them to come in operating the jail and getting city rates. The, in the meantime, I think once the annexation is completed, there's probably going to be a petition before the BZA to about a tower, and there also will be a request to rezone the property, not just the jail, but all of the property that the county owns, rezoning it from agriculture to C2.
Okay, anything else, Tim? Department heads, Greg?
No, thank you.
Fire department, you get two chances. Roger?
No, nothing tonight.
Jeremy?
Yeah, and one thing, next Tuesday, July 12th, there's an iron kid, trying to happen along. Currently, there's 75 kids signed up.
Wonderful.
64 altogether, so it's always been a very well attended event.
That's terrific. There was one year, several years ago, that they either almost or did cancel it because of lack of participation, so that's great.
For that evening, there will be the normal, the nursery restrictions for about 40 minutes, from 7:00 to 7:40. Chris and his helpers have gone out and discussed everything with the homeowners that are still allowed living in access. They're all in due, just a real small window where if you're hoping that area, you won't be able to go. But the homeowners are aware of that, are fine with that, and I think they actually kind of enjoy that activity.
Yep. I encourage residents to come out and watch this, even if you don't have a child in it, it's inspiration, it's inspirational to watch these little squirts, I think they started, what, seven years old, six years old, something like that, and, or five maybe even, and up to, what, 13, something like that? They swim, then they ride the bike, then they run, and when they come in after that run, it's, it's very inspirational, it really is, it's really cool. So, okay, anything else, Jeremy? Mr. Carbock, nothing, any more from you, Dan?
Nope, nothing else.
Melissa has something, I know.
Tickets go on sale tomorrow for Decatur Night at the Tin Cap. It'll be Decatur Night at the Fort Wayne Tin Cap, Saturday, August 13th, at Parkview Field in downtown Fort Wayne. The City of Decatur has a block of tickets along the third baseline, it's a 7:05 first pitch, and fireworks will follow the game. Like, if the tickets go on sale tomorrow, and they can only be purchased at Riverside Center, tickets are $7, and the first 240 tickets sold will receive a food voucher for hot dogs, chips, and pop at the Hulk. Thanks to the generosity of some 17 local businesses as of right now, we have enough to do multiple door prizes, or draw your seat out of a hat between innings. We've got everything from a bicycle, to pizza, gift certificates, to a lot of really nice prizes we'll be able to award. Everyone who purchases a ticket will be entered into a drawing, and we're going to draw that out also, because you can throw out the first pitch of the ballgame.
Yeah, we're going to draw that at the next concert, correct?
At the August 4th Thursday night concert, we're going to draw the winner out.
Whether it's a little boy, a little girl, or an old man?
Or, yeah.
Or a grandma, they can, they can throw out the first pitch.
We still welcome sponsorship opportunities from individuals or local businesses if you'd like to help us out with that event.
Right, we have enough, we have enough sponsors to do the food voucher for the first 240, it would be great to have a few more sponsors step up and be able to offer that to everyone.
And every Decatur person who purchases a ticket will also get another voucher for a Decatur goodie bag when they come in the door.
Right, yeah, pretty cool, the parking rec department, Melissa, Jeremy.
Get your tickets tomorrow, because we, I've already heard somebody's taken up 30 seats.
Yeah. They'll go fast, they will go fast. All right, Mr. Bedwell, you have anything?
I'm sure Mary would ask if the air conditioner is running at the station.
Uh, if it's not, it's real close by now, I would say, Greg, do you know?
What's that?
The air conditioning?
Air conditioner running at the old workstation?
No, they're still working, huh?
They're in the process of putting it in, which is much quicker than we anticipated back when she.
Yeah, it's two weeks.
Yeah, yeah. Luke, do you have anything tonight?
No.
Thanks for visiting.
You're welcome.
Mr. Becker?
Sir?
Sir, I don't know who you are, if you want to tell us who you are, just here to visit?
I stopped by to listen to the people up front.
Uh-huh, okay. You driver? Former driver, maybe?
In-house employee.
Okay, okay, good, well, thanks for coming, you're always welcome to, to visit. Mr. Schrulut, do you have anything?
I was talking when they were talking.
Bob, you want to read that? Because it sounds like they read the paper back there in the survey.
Hey, Bob, I can see you right now.
Council members, any comments? Wylie has one.
I do have a question, Jeremy, Riverside roof, do you have any kind of update on that?
They're waiting on that, on the second quote, which should be back here shortly.
Quotes can be a hangup.
Yeah.
Okay, how, how much of space is that again, that you're looking at?
We're putting him on the spot.
I remember, I think it's 22 square, or 23 square, to the back portion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council comments? Phyllis?
No, you're good, thank you.
Well, want to pay the bills this month, guys?
I make a motion to pay the claims.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, second and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you, we're adjourned.